Thank you guys for coming. Before we begin our agenda today, we have a presentation by Joe Salvo, the chief anthropographer of New York City to give us an update on the census.
It's almost showtime, everybody. The census is almost upon us. What I want to do is give you an update, give you a briefing on the main elements of the census, and as the title indicates, also talk to you about some of the things that you'll be hearing about regarding, hopefully, what will be the success of the decennial census in New York. For those of you who don't know, the census actually begins March 12th. That is the first day that the Census Bureau will be mailing materials. They will be doing that mailing between March 12th and the end of March because, I dare say, putting 150 million packets through mail into the postal service can at the same time should scare anyone, including the Census Bureau. So they stagger it over a period of days and then they put those packets in the mail. You'll be able to respond on the internet, like paper, or like telephone. Internet and telephone for the first time. Non-responds follow. Where the Census Bureau goes out and starts to knock on doors occurs or begins in May, the first week of May. The entire month of April is referred to be the self-response period. Self-response can occur anytime. This is also new. If that piece of paper is sitting on your desk, you have phone calls you just don't want to listen to, and you're saying, "You know, I got this message today. I'm going to respond." And it's June 3rd, and you can still go on the internet and respond on your own. And that's very important. I'll explain why. So what's different this time? As I said, you can respond via the internet, the first time they're doing this. Second, the Census Bureau is going to use administrative records, and I'll explain in a few minutes what that means, to fill in blanks, including whole house names. There is something called non-ID processing. When you get your packet, the Census Bureau will include an ID that you can use on the internet. Or if you get a paper form, your paper form is barcoded with your ID. But in order to increase self-response, the Census Bureau has told everyone, you don't need that ID. You can just enter your address. Next, I don't have to tell you about the privacy and cybersecurity concerns. The scamming has already started. The Census Bureau has methods that they've come up with to detect this, but they're ordering people out there, asking people to respond to all kinds of things. So scamming is a really big concern this time. And lastly, we have an environment, this is my fourth census, every census has problems. I've seen a lot of things go wrong, but this time around, the climate of fear is beyond anything we've seen before, especially in the communities of New York. We have large numbers of immigrants. 3.2 million immigrants, 45% of whom are non-citizens. It's a lot of people who feel threatened. So what does it mean when we talk about the Census Bureau sending out materials? The Census Bureau is going to, in the purple areas on the map, is going to send a letter asking you to go to the internet, alright? In the darker purple areas, the letter you get will be bilingual, Spanish, English. So you see immediately, there's a lot of purple on this map. 80% of the country is going to get that letter with a request to go to the internet. You see the green areas here. The green areas, we're also going to get a letter, "Please go to the internet." But in addition, those green areas are going to get a paper questionnaire. Those green areas are designated for paper because of internet issues. Internet access is not up to where it needs to be. The Census Bureau's made decisions on this, for example, in the South Bronx. You see in the large portion of the South Bronx, it's going to be internet and paper questionnaire. And the darker green areas, those paper questionnaires of all materials will be bilingual Spanish. New York City is unique. About 20% of the country is going to get a request to go to the internet and a paper form. New York City is closer to 30, so the reason has to be largely in big chunks of the South Bronx where bilingual paper is seen as being the way to go. But you'll also notice in Queens, in the area adjacent to Flushing Meadow Park, Corona, for example, a good decision there, paper bilingual. There are a number of areas that are going to get a paper questionnaire. For example, Borough Park, Williamsburg, because of very low response rates in the previous census and low internet access, they're also going to get paper. So there's going to be a heavy reliance, no doubt, on the internet, but there'll be paper options for a number of respondents. There'll be five mailings in all. The first can be the initial contact, then there'll be a reminder letter, then there'll be a reminder postcard. On the fourth mailing, they send paper to every month, okay? And the fifth mailing is again another reminder. By the end of April, we're moving out of the self-response period, and this is one of the census bureaus to send people out to knock on doors. Our goal is that self-response is very high. And one of the big themes of what I'm going to tell you about today is why we care about self-response. The data we get from self-response, time and time again, is superior to any data we get by way of the Census Bureau's field workers. By definition, the Census Bureau's field workers are dealing with people who are resistant, okay? People who respond on their own give us better data. The higher the level of self-response, in general, the lower the probability of an undercount. Groups that have high self-response are generally groups that are not undercounted. The non-responds follow-up, or we have this journal Nerf, introduces problems. When the Census Bureau has to send people out to resistant households, problems occur. Last year, I was part of a litigation involving the New York Attorney General, and my job was to go in and talk about what happens when the Census Bureau goes out and attempts to get information from resistant households. And the last point, when self-response is low, the pressure increases dramatically on the Census Bureau. Costs go up dramatically, but the pressure on field workers increases. And one thing I keep telling everyone is, we don't want to kill the Census Bureau. We want the Census Bureau to do a good job, and the career professionals at the Bureau want to do a good job. We have to help them as best we can. Now, as many of you have seen this map, it's a response rate map. This is the 2010 census. We know where the low-response neighborhoods are. And you see in the darker colors here, the response levels, well below the city average, is 62%, 61%, 69%. We see southeast Queens, a big chunk of central Brooklyn, Bedford-Stuyvesant, Ocean Hill-Brownsville, the north proportions of the East Bronx, the North Shore of Staten Island, all below, where they need to be in terms of mailing. Again, emphasizing that the better data comes in during the self-response period. Now, also note here, Washington Heights and Manhattan, and Jackson Heights in Queens, immigrant areas, by all Census Bureau accounting measures, should have done poorly in 2010 and did very well in self-response. There are community-based organizations in these areas that did a phenomenal job. They have to do a phenomenal job now, and they've got hurdles they have not had in the past. Now, just to give you a quick idea of what I said earlier. If you look at this chart, you'll see at the bottom, these are people who all self-responded, starting, well, at the end of February, there's a reason for that, into March, and through, actually, let me say, through May through September. No matter when you responded on your own, the data are high quality. Even those laggards who responded in May, end June, end July, there was a few, who do respond in July, technically, the census ends the end of July and it only slips under the August. This correct enumeration is very high. If you do not self-respond, the percentage correct drops substantially, okay? Those enumerations deemed not to be correct increase because, again, going out and non-responds follow-up introduces errors. What kind of error? I don't know if any of you have seen this map before, but this is a map that we created within hours of the 2010 census results being issued, okay? What it shows is that in two census offices in 2010, in northwest Queens and in southern Brooklyn, massive increases, 200, 300, 400% increases in vacant housing units, okay? In southern Brooklyn, now, this map would be a map that you would see in Bushwick or the Bronx in the 1970s, alright? So not New York City in 2010, alright? Dyker Heights, Bay Ridge, Bensonhurst, Astoria, would probably be places with massive increases in vacant housing units, between 2000 and 2010. This was the result of census enumeration, numerator error. The Census Bureau knocked on doors, nobody responded, and they called in day early. Said, "There's nobody here," calling vacant, in large numbers. We haven't waited a year to get this data. This time around, because of the internet, if the Census Bureau starts receiving massive numbers of vacant units in a particular location, they will more than likely communicate with us that they're seeing us and try to see whether it makes sense or not. The same goes for people who make up information with non-response follow-up. By the way, historically, people who make up data are not very creative. They will make up massive numbers of one-person households, okay? They will check off everybody having the same characteristics, and that sets up a red flag because of real-time data collection through the internet. We're hoping that those issues will be spied on. Alright, now, administrative records. If you do not respond on your own, Census Bureau sends someone out. They put a tag on your door, say, "We've been here." They then go and look to see if that address has administrative records associated with it. What do we need? Previous census, what's called the social security num目的file. Everything having to do with your social security. Federal files, tracking files that HUD uses for mortgage applications, for example. For programs, program eligibility, that's these HUD files are: TANF, Temporary Assistance in Gay Families, Medicare Part B, and a slew of commercial files. Why am I putting this up? New York City has 2.3, 2.4 million Hispanics, okay? The representation of the Hispanic community in these admin records is nowhere near what it is for the non-Hispanic. So the Census Bureau is likely to experience a serious bias when they go ahead and try to match Hispanic households to the administrative records. In other words, they're going to come up dry. Now, they don't have you in administrative records. You don't answer the door. The next step is to start to talk to your neighbors, okay? They'll ask your neighbor, "How many people are in that basement? Who's there? Tell me about them," and they'll try to put that together. Notoriously poor source of information. It's called proxy response, no good. Let's say you can't find anybody who's willing to tell you who's in the basement. The Census Bureau then goes ahead and uses a statistical algorithm. It's called imputation. Whole household imputation, also referred to as substitution, is when all persons in a household have their characteristics eaten down to the number of people in that basement, determined by a statistical algorithm. How do they do this? They go to a household in the neighborhood where the characteristics are known. Known, that's called a donor household. It is then used to substitute for the characteristics of the household that failed to respond. What have we learned from this operation in 2010? This is the map. Nationwide, you might say to yourself, 1.5 million, it doesn't seem like there was a lot of people who were imputed or substituted. These are people who only substituted, in households where all the data got created. So nationwide, you say that the number is not that high. The city rate is 2.7%, Brooklyn is 4%. And here's the big news. In this census office, which encompasses Canarsie, parts of East New York, Ocean Hill-Brownsville, upwards of one of every five people was created by the Census Bureau, by a statistical algorithm in 2010, because people did not respond on their own. We let the census, for want of a better phrase, we let all of these operations work their way through and essentially create people through statistical computations. So when you go into Canarsie, there's a section here in the southern portion of Canarsie, you ask yourself, "What are the characteristics of these people?" And you find out that for one in every five people in that area, we actually don't have the real data. We have the data through a donor household perhaps in the neighborhood. Now, if you look at census tracts, and by the way, this is a census tract map, which have high substitution rates, high amounts of this imputation. And you look at tracts that have greater than 6%, they are 47% black. The city's only 25%. So the black community is not getting its characteristics accurately portrayed. Poverty levels, they're higher, representation among tracts with high levels of imputation. Female-headed families, overrepresented, and look, low density neighborhoods. Canarsie being just back. Black population, low density housing. All of this, overrepresented in tracts subject to high levels of substitution. So now, one of the items in the title is, it's about undercount. And this is something you need to know because the Census Bureau is going to estimate undercount for New York City by conducting a post-numeration survey, where they go out and they do an independent listing of housing units on a sample of blocks, and they compare it to their census results. Through this method, in 2010, the overall undercount here, which is in the blue, was determined to be 1.7%. It's not statistically significant. None of these blue bars are statistically meaningful, okay? In essence, New York City did not have an undercount in 2010, a net undercount. What most people don't realize is when the Census Bureau talks about undercount, they talk about a net impact. There are errors in both directions. Yes, there are people who filled out multiple census papers, okay? There are people who get counted twice, sometimes perhaps even more. In the green bar, we have what are called omissions. This is what we typically think of, of people who are left off the census. And in the red bar, we have erroneous numerations, people who are counted more than once, duplicates. Now, here's the key point. For New York City overall, these two largely counteract each other, producing a net undercount of close to zero in terms of total numbers. But here's the key. The omissions and the erroneous numerations are occurring in different neighborhoods, okay? The neighborhood I showed you earlier, in Ocean Hill-Brownsville and Canarsie area, is subject to a large number of omissions. How do we know that? Because in general, the black population nationwide has high levels of omissions. There's no reason to believe that's not true for New York City. Now, let's do as an example here, Brooklyn. 10% of the issue in Brooklyn, and it's concentrated heavily in black neighborhoods. There are black neighborhoods with a large numbers of males between the ages of 20 and 34 on the street, okay? And how do we know this? We know this because we look at sex ratios, and we know that if you have a preponderance of females in a particular neighborhood, okay, there could be some reasons for it other than this, but undercount is one of the primary reasons for that. But think about this. 10% of Brooklyn's population, and it's huge. But in Brooklyn, there are also 8% erroneous numerations. So you have several hundred thousand errors counteracting each other, but those errors are occurring in different neighborhoods. The erroneous omissions are occurring in Bay Ridge, Dyker Heights, okay? The omissions are occurring in other areas. So why do we care about this? Just as an example, if you look at the number of kids that are vaccinated in the neighborhood in 2010, and just hypothetical example, 98 kids were vaccinated in the neighborhood. The Census Bureau tells you there are 100 kids in that neighborhood. You make a judgment that you've done very well. And this is hypothetical, but it's real because this is what the health department does. Then, you go ahead and you find out that there's been a problem, there's been a bit of an undercount. In reality, there are 110 kids in the neighborhood. The percentage of kids vaccinated is now 89%. You're not getting to all the children, when you take into account the undercount. And when you look at change over time, and you look at these numbers, and you say to yourself, in the 2000 census, the number was 93. 93 compared to 89, and 93 compared to 98 is quite a different story. The reason I want to bring this point home is that the number of children, the number of people in neighborhoods really matter for what we do from the analysis of rates as base for our projections. We've said that the population of the city is aging. That is based on the census. We start with the decennial census and move age groups forward in an effort to try to project population. If the base is off, you're in big trouble, okay? It matters. The number of people really matters. Now, one last point I wanted to add, and again, I don't want to end on this because the city is about to unleash a tremendous outbreak there, the likes of which we've never seen. How many of you have seen your first census commercial? Just wait. In the next couple of weeks, you won't be able to get on the subway and do anything without seeing this census commercial. Hopefully, you'll be tired of it and you'll say, "I don't want these people coming to my door. I'm just going to answer them if you open it." Remember, it's only like nine questions. It's really pretty limited. Alright, how many of you heard of the American Community Survey, the ACS? This is what used to be called a long form. It's got all of the juicy information on it, like income and education, how you get to work and all that. Alright, 2010 to 2018, looking at the pattern of response, okay? This is compliance, or lack thereof, of compliance in the ACS. These are reasons why people have not complied with the ACS. Now remember, people who have mailed, we do a mailing, the Census Bureau does a mailing, and then they go out and they do what they do in the census, they knock on doors. This blip up in 2013 has to do with the budget, with the government shutdown. Okay, so we ignore them. Has to do with the problem with the government shutdown. Since 2014, the amount of non-responds, this is ACS housing unit non-responds, meaning that you knock on the door and you either refuse, or there's no one home. No one home is essentially a refusal. So this is people who are refusing to answer their doors. And you'll notice a pattern. Especially, most markedly in the Bronx, 27% of addresses in the Bronx are now in the refusal category in the American Community Survey. 19% in Brooklyn. And we see an uptick in Manhattan, an uptick in Queens, in Staten Island. And this drives home the idea that compliance in surveys is generally down. Nationwide, people, how many of you answered your phone without listening to your machine? I mean, right? We don't do that. Everybody swines calls. Everybody's very conscious of that. How many people answer the door in some neighborhoods? It is a big problem, and New York City has a population and number of processes that are resistant. So what does this 27% mean? It translates into resistance, and unfortunately for us, if we don't get people to respond on their own, it's going to translate into an unprecedented amount of imputation. The Census Bureau is going to put people in those households one way or another. We don't want them to use a routine to put people in those households, a statistical algorithm, alright? We want people to respond on their own. So I'm going to end there. I wanted to end on a more hopeful comment, but let me say this. We've had many barriers to response in the past. This time, we're pushing with NYC2020, the AVNI, a whole bunch of organizations. It's going to get people to respond on their own. That is the key. If the Census Bureau gets a deluge of people who fail to respond, their jobs are going to be harder, and the kind of stuff I just showed you is just going to increase as a percentage of what the total enumeration is. So with that...
Well, thank you, Joe. I hope that you realize that you have just had a master class with the Census. A couple of things to emphasize. One is Joe and his team of anthropographers have an extraordinary relationship with the career folks at the US Census Bureau, and that is very, very important. These are career couple of servants who are dedicated to getting a good count and we want to share that relationship. The second is that Joe's team will continue working throughout the census, hand in blood with the Census Bureau, but with a far finer brain to understanding of our population and of where problems might be emerging. The third thing I'd note is that this census information and the ability of Joe's team to analyze the data is the lifeblood of what we do at city planning. We pride ourselves on having fact-based planning. This is not something to be taken for granted. Many cities, in most major cities, don't have nearly this capacity. And this informs our housing projections, the projections of school seats, how emergency services are deployed, and so that is why we are putting so much information. The final thing which Joe had previewed is the outreach that is being coordinated and the partners that the city has with AVNI, putting an unprecedented amount, our city college network of communities of faith, funding for community organizations to meet people where they are through intermediaries, who they will work on a community-by-community basis. And I would just urge, not just the commissioners, but all who are in the room, you are parts of networks, and using those networks to spread the word. Very fortunately, the journalistic community has also stepped forward, their very specific outreach to ethnic, to minority press, and reaching people where it is that they are. And if that helps, I'll slip over to the commissioner to do the questions of Dr. Joe Salvo. Commissioner Rose.
First, I just want to say thank you very much. You are renowned in your expertise in cities with the question.
Thank you.
I'm wondering, do you have a map that shows the response rate in public housing processes?
We have a map of public housing tracts that can be outlined. We can superimpose that on the map I showed you.
I'd love that as a follow-up.
Yes, yes. You've got to be really careful in public housing projects because sometimes the response rate, self-response is high, but people get left off of the questionnaire. So the Census Bureau counts it, right? So that's one of the things that we're a bit nervous about. But sure, we can provide you with that, okay?
Commissioner Burden.
It was, again, thank you. It was a big recruitment drive for Census. What was the sign of that code? Did all those positions get fired?
Well, it's interesting you asked that because I just asked the Census Bureau that question a few days ago. They have to recruit, they staggeringly are, people because of attrition. In the city alone, 82,000 is the number they're getting after recruit. But here's the good news, is they've met their recruiting goals. For the most part, they're meeting their recruiting goals. And I got a... And I got a, that good news from the, directly from the regional director just a few days ago. We were concerned, frankly, given the unemployment rate and so on, and apprehension. And up until a short time ago, we were not able to hire non-citizens. Now, non-citizens can be hired at home to body-specific languages. But I would imagine the Census Bureau is taking full advantage of that.
Commissioner Burkey.
Thank you so much. I will add from the perspective of, you know, retail market research, you know, having accurate census. Data is critical. How do you decide a grocery store? You don't have so much standing there in a neighborhood. So it's so very important to go work that I'm going to do as well. I have a question. You know, I was recently listening to NPR coverage on incarcerated residents and their movement in the census. And it occurred to me that, you know, that's a challenge. You know, if they're incarcerated residents are, you know, in general upstate, where are they counted in New York? I think New York is a state that counts in where they live. But can you speak to that issue?
Sure. Representative Blake actually asked me this. Assemblyman Blake asked me this question about the Bronx. He has a contingent that's in Rikers Island. And he says, wait a minute, Joe, you told me it's where you spend most of the year. These people, most of the year, in my district. Why aren't they enumerated there? Because if you're in a group quarters facility, such as Rikers Island, you are enumerated in group quarters there. Because that's a rule the Census Bureau has. Now, to get to your other question, your question earlier. New York does have a law which says essentially that upstate prisoners are moved back in, moved back into the city for the purposes of drawing, for example, council districts and legislative districts for the state. Not federal, but the state. So upstate prison prisoners, and this is state prisoners, okay, are moved into the city, their last address, known address, in an effort to essentially reallocate them to the districts mentioned. There is a law that allows for that. And in fact, when we do the calculation in a year and a half or two years to overlay council districts on community districts, that data, those data are used to make that determination with the upstate prisoners factor in. So that we can tell each council person how many community district people are counted.
We're not perfect.
Definitely not, for sure.
I have a question. I live in Queens. Residential community, row two, one or two, two stories, two family houses on my block. But in terms of when they go to the houses, do they just knock on the front door? Or do they go around knocking on the side door for the second-floor tenants? I'm just curious to follow up.
Okay, first off, rest assured, we worked several years to get those addresses noticed, okay?
I'll forget statistics of how many.
Yes, yeah. We, we, this time around, have added about a hundred and twenty-three thousand housing units that were not on the Census Bureau's address list. And a chunk of those are in Queens and include those basements. We did this through multiple years of field work. So we know where the doors are and what to do. And Commissioner Alago just alluded to the fact that we have a great relationship with the Census Bureau. So good that the Census Bureau allows us to help them train their CFMs or Census Field Managers who are responsible for training the numerators who go out and are responsible for all of them. What we do with them is we show them those side doors, the cut blocks in Jackson Heights. And you have to walk around the back in order to see those units. You can't just walk on a block. You've got to go around. So we give them literally our manual and our experience from being in the field for a few years so that they can then give them correct instructions for their numerators, okay? So that, that is kind of the essence, you know, I think, of what we're trying to accomplish here. Because we don't want people knocking on our front door and saying, oh, this is vacant. That routine. We're hoping that this will result in a minimal, hopefully, that results in much better results. If you don't mind me asking, what neighborhood?
Richmond Hill.
Oh, okay, okay. So you've got very big houses, big diners community, a lot of stuff to do. Yeah, so, okay, got it.
Commissioner Loz.
So thank you for doing this. It's a great, stated course of, and good luck with its rollout. It's really, I wonder if there's anything to be said about the national context for this? Because we all know sort of overall that the country is becoming increasingly urbanized. And I imagine the issues that, for example, that here in New York City are similar to the issues in Los Angeles, Seattle, and other suburban urban areas. But how is, one of the challenges in some of the other parts of the country, how is it, how is this going to work nationally with all the other countries involved?
One of the roles we play is helping to translate what we've seen for other cities. I worked here in Detroit. It has a different set of problems. Population being quite different. But undercount issues are very serious. I don't know if you guys noticed, but Detroit's pop went below a level where they were actually denied funding for new pipes, to, to replace electric pipes. I mean, that's how serious the situation is now. So they have different types of issues than we have, but involving their housing. Big issues getting people to respond, frankly. You know, and of course demolitions. You know, whether something is a housing unit, whatever, what is temporary versus permanent occupancy is a much bigger issue. And their address list suffers because a lot of people in Detroit registered cars outside, have whole lives outside of the city limits. And because of that, they're not picked up in a lot of the administrative data that a local government might use in an effort to improve the address list and so on. So that's Detroit. But I'm thinking of Los Angeles. Thinking about Houston, areas with large immigrant populations. What we all have in common is this apprehension. And interestingly enough, the apprehension is blue and red, okay? Arizona has a lot of immigrants. So does Texas. So does, you know, Florida. And you wonder how this is all going to work out because obviously, we all have our eye on those congressional seats and what's going to happen as a result of that. And, you know, the budget for outreach in Texas is pretty close to a goose egg. And one wonders, there's things going on in individual communities. But the city of Houston is interested certainly in getting its population from the city enumerated. But in terms of the level of funding that we have here in New York, it's only matched by California's. There are a whole number of California cities we're dealing with, with immigrant, immigrant issues. But the issue about the extra apartments subdivision is occurring in every city with population pressure and housing crisis and homelessness being a serious problem, especially in cities where the climate's more favorable year-round, or, you know, year-round occupancy like Los Angeles.
One other thing I'll note is that Joe hosted a forum with the deputy mayor for the region, including the city of Newark, because much as we're focused on getting a count for New York, it's important that the region be counted as well or part of that ecosystem. And so Joe's team has been working closely, providing technical expertise.
Yeah, we've been doing webinars for cities through different avenues. Bloomberg, for example. And I've got a message involved to try to help some other cities.
So what are rural communities worried about?
Rural, okay. I don't pretend to be an expert on rural communities. Well, I think, I, I think the major issue for rural communities has to do with how they're being enumerated. The Census Bureau, in a small percentage of the nation, is going, and by the way, all of Puerto Rico, is going to send people out to deliver the packets. In other words, they find somebody, they give them the packet and say, please fill it out and mail it back.
And they're like pencil or something?
No, and they'll fix the address. Puerto Rico has been so devastated that their addressing system, it really precludes the possibility of mailing. So they're not taking a chance. So, by the way, our New York Regional Office is responsible for the census of Puerto Rico, as well as all of the Northeast pretty much. So that's another thing to keep in mind as we go through this. They have a tremendous problem. So in rural areas, it's a matter of making sure that all the addresses are on the list. Upstate New York has added an initiative to Cornell to try to identify one of those housing units, especially new housing units in these subdivisions that have gone up all over the state, to make sure they're on the list. I would say that response, they get special treatment in the form of this what's called update leave, where they update the addresses and they leave the packet. And that tends to increase the amount of response that's there. But the address list is a major concern, making sure they're all full there. And New York State's got a, in these areas, has done a fairly good job of doing that. I think the bigger issue in a lot of the country, though, has not so much to do, I think it has to do with issues of privacy. Aside from the cybersecurity, you know, concerns, you know, there's just an issue. There's always going to be a group of people who don't want to turn any information to the government. And a lot of these are located in rural parts of the country. And by the way, the apprehension in the American League community is really powerful. It is just amazing. If you go back and look at history, the American League community in the U.S. has never been well in the neighborhood. And a lot of it has to do with the way they are, but a lot of it has to do with apprehension.
Commissioner Kelly.
I was wondering if the Iowa Democratic Party could reach out to you and help.
There you go.
I'd give you a presentation.
You know, I think Iowa, New York City.
Well, I think on that note, well, thank you. Let's do it.
Thank you all.
Okay. So continuing on, this is, and welcome to a special review session for the New York City Planning Commission Wednesday, February 5th, 2020. The time is 10:44 a.m. And a quorum is definitely present. The first and only item on our agenda for the review session is a city council modification scope determination for 22-1646 Street rezoning. The city council proposes to modify the MIH program, eliminating workforce option and adding option one. Staff believe that this modification is within the script.
And so I'd ask for a set by show of hands to send a letter to the city council in the second half.
And this concludes the special review session. And.
Time to welcome you to the public hearing.
Good morning. This is the City Planning Commission Public Meeting held at NYC City Planning Commission, Central Park Conference Room, 31st floor, 120 Broadway. Today is Wednesday, February 5th, 2020. As a courtesy during the proceedings, we ask that you please turn off all cell phones and electronic devices. All speakers should fill out a speaker's card. In addition, we ask that those providing testimony, please identify yourself. Limit your remarks to three minutes and speak clearly into the microphone. I will not call the robe. Chair Lago.
Here.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Here.
Commissioner Barney.
Here.
Commissioner Capelli.
Here.
Commissioner Cirulo.
Here.
Commissioner Delauss.
Here.
Commissioner Duett.
Here.
Commissioner Edie.
Here.
Commissioner Knight.
Here.
Commissioner Levin.
Here.
He's actually over there. Come on here.
Commissioner Marin. Commissioner Ortiz.
Here.
Commissioner Rappich.
Here.
A quorum is present. The first item is the approval of the minutes of the public meeting of Wednesday, January 22nd, 2020, and special meeting of Monday, February 3rd, 2020.
The minutes all in favor?
Scheduling calendar numbers one through five, we have resolutions for adoption. Scheduling Wednesday, February 19th, 2020, for a public hearing to be held at NYC City Planning Commission Hearing Room, Lower Concourse, 120 Broadway.
And are the resolutions all in favor?
Aye.
Post resolution or adopted.
The next part of the calendar is the Report, Section of Page 17. Borough of the Bronx, calendar numbers six and seven. Calendar number six, CD6C190087MMX. Calendar number seven, C190043MMX. In the matter of applications for the zoning, for zoning map amendments concerning East 175th and 180th Street Bridge Rehabilitation, for favorable reports on calendar numbers six and seven. Madam Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Barney.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirulo.
Yes.
Commissioner Delauss.
Yes.
Commissioner Duett.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rappich.
Yes.
Favorable reports have been adopted on calendar numbers six and seven. Borough of the Bronx, calendar number eight, CD10C20088ZMX. In the matter of an application for a zoning map amendment concerning C7 Baychester Avenue rezoning, for a favorable report on calendar number eight. Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Barney.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirulo.
Yes.
Commissioner Delauss.
Yes.
Commissioner Duett.[1523.80] School 31, on the adoption of calendar number 9 for referral to the city council. Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Barney.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirullo.
Yes.
Commissioner De La Ous.
Yes.
Commissioner Duett.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rappich.
Yes.
A favorable report has been adopted on calendar number 10 and 11. Calendar number 10, CD8, C190256ZMK. Calendar number 11, N190257ZRK. In the matter of applications for zoning map and zoning text amendments concerning Grand Avenue and Pacific Street rezoning, for favorable reports on calendar numbers 10 and 11. Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Barney.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirullo.
Yes.
Commissioner De La Ous.
Yes.
Commissioner Duett.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rappich.
Yes.
A favorable report has been adopted on calendar number 13. Borough of Brooklyn, calendar number 12, CD13, C190172ZMK. In the matter of an application for a zoning map amendment concerning 811813th Avenue rezoning, for a favorable report on calendar number 13. Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Barney.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirullo.
Yes.
Commissioner De La Ous.
Yes.
Commissioner Duett.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rappich.
Yes.
A favorable report has been adopted on calendar numbers 10 and 11. Borough of Brooklyn, calendar number 12, CD13, C190172ZMK. In the matter of an application for a zoning map amendment concerning 271 Seabreeze Avenue, for a favorable report on calendar number 12. Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Barney.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirullo.
Yes.
Commissioner De La Ous.
Yes.
Commissioner Duett.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rappich.
Yes.
A favorable report has been adopted on calendar number 13. Borough of Queens, calendar number 14, CD2, N190352ZRQ. In the matter of an application for a zoning text amendment concerning Queens Boulevard M.I.H. text amendment, for a favorable report on calendar number 14. Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Barney.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirullo.
Yes.
Commissioner De La Ous.
Yes.
Commissioner Duett.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rappich.
Yes.
A favorable report has been adopted on calendar number 14. Borough of Queens, calendar number 15, CD7, N20055PXQ. In the matter of a notice of intent to acquire office space concerning Queens Community Board 7, for a favorable report on calendar number 15. Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Barney.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirullo.
Yes.
Commissioner De La Ous.
Yes.
Commissioner Duett.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rappich.
Yes.
A favorable report has been adopted on calendar number 16. Borough of Manhattan, calendar numbers 16 through 20. Calendar number 16, CD5, N200223HIM. Calendar number 17, N200224HIM. Calendar number 18, N200225HIM. Calendar number 19, N200226HIM. Calendar number 20, N200227HIM. Concerning 47, 49, 51, 53, and 55 West 28th Street buildings, Tin Pan Alley. In the matter of communications concerning landmark designation, for adoption on calendar numbers 16 through 20 for referral to the city council. Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Barney.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirullo.
Yes.
Commissioner De La Ous.
Yes.
Commissioner Duett.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rappich.
Yes.
A favorable report has been adopted on calendar number 20. Borough of Manhattan, calendar number 21 and 22. Calendar number 21, CD1, N200180ZAM. Calendar number 22, N200182ZAM. In the matter of applications for the grant of authorizations concerning 100 Pearl Street Arcade in Phil. For adoption on calendar numbers 21 and 22. Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Barney.
I still see this proposal as a de facto privatization of the public space.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirullo.
Yes.
Commissioner De La Ous.
Yes.
Commissioner Duett.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
I still see this proposal as a de facto privatization of the public space.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirullo.
Yes.
Commissioner De La Ous.
Yes.
Commissioner Duett.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rappich.
Yes.
Calendar numbers 21 and 22 have been adopted. The next part of the calendar is the public hearing section on page 30. Borough of Brooklyn, calendar number 23, CD2, C190011ZMK. A public hearing in the matter of an application for a zoning map amendment concerning 50 Old Fulton rezoning.
We're going to have a 10-minute presentation by applicant teams comprised of Tony Lieberman, Rachel Scott, Chris Fogan, and available question, Adam West.
My name is Tommy Lieberman. I'm one of the principals of all West Old Fulton L.A.C. that have chosen for this rezoning. I'm here today with my partner, Adam Petrov. Our zoning attorney and our architect. Adam and I own and operate about nine buildings in Brooklyn. They're a mix of residential, commercial, industrial buildings. We've developed and renovated all of these buildings, including, just to give you an idea, 177 Concourse Street, which is in Timber Hill, 327 Sterling Street, which is at Crown Heights, 1000 Union Street, which is also in Crown Heights. We purchased 50 Old Fulton Street in November 2016 with the intention to develop the size of retail and office spaces. We're pursuing a rezoning because we think we can develop something exciting in the city while still respecting the history of the neighborhood. We want people coming to the area to say, wow, it's a nice neighborhood, instead of, wow, it's a lot of cars parked on the side. Just to give you a little bit of background, I could walk around Manhattan, Brooklyn, and add a little, all of New York a lot. And for the past 20, 25 years, I've come to this neighborhood and I always loved it. I fell in love with it. And I always wanted to be part of it, trying to do something with it. When I came, it was a lot of, I saw the park now, then I saw the car spot. It wasn't really what it's supposed to be. I think it's historic and significant. And I think with our future plans, we could add to this neighborhood, make it remain an interesting and beautiful neighborhood. I will hand over the project team to tell you more about the locations.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Rachel Scoban, Associate at Greenberg Tire. We represent all of Old Fulton on this rezoning application. Currently, the rezoning area is in M21 zoning district. Our client owns Lot 14, that you see there. It's about 6,600 square foot lot and through the one-story auto body shop and Lot 18 to the east there. It's also included in the rezoning area, also included, or also improved with an auto body shop. You can see some pictures of what that looks like here. The rezoning area is current M21 zoning district was put in place in 1961 when Brooklyn's waterfront was largely industrial. Since that time, the area has changed significantly. It's now largely a commercial area, a significant tourist destination, thanks to large parks of Brooklyn Bridge Park and the Brooklyn Bridge. Old Fulton Street serves as the main pedestrian connection for downtown Brooklyn, Brooklyn Heights to Brooklyn Bridge Park. In addition, the nearby Watchtower Building, that you see there on the left, are being converted to office uses and Dumbo has really transformed into a mixed-use office, retail, residential neighborhood. The current auto body uses on, in the proposed rezoning area really no longer makes sense here. The area is in a transit zone, controlled by the nearby 2, 3 A/C and F trains, multiple buses, East River Ferry, and City Bike. And this portion of Old Fulton Street really caters to pedestrians and its pedestrian corridor. To go through, quickly, a few more photos here. We worked hard with the department to come up with a zoning district that promotes appropriate development here. The proposed M15 zoning district will permit office and local retail uses. It will not allow big box or residential uses and hotels would only be permitted with a special permit. The building envelope and floor area permitted by the M15 district will be consistent with other buildings in the area. Here you see a rendering of what the proposed looks like. It's in context with other buildings such as the Watchtower Building in the back there, the Eagle Box Building on the right there, which is between the 88 and 98th, and the elevated roadways across Old Fulton Street and across Hick Street. In addition, Old Fulton Street is a wide street that can handle modest increase in density. We believe that the proposed, that the proposed rezoning would allow for redevelopment of the project area to create a more cohesive commercial street frontage on the south side of Old Fulton Street. Anyone approaching Fulton Ferry Landing from the east passing under the BQE currently emerges into what should be a welcoming gateway to a few of the neighborhood and commercial thoroughfare heading towards the Brooklyn Bridge Park and East River Ferry. And instead, pedestrians currently need to navigate what is potentially a parking lot on the sidewalk where these auto body uses currently exist. The proposed rezoning will elaborate the development site with active pedestrian uses and a new building that will fit its surrounding context. The rezoning would also introduce offices to the project area, which would help bridge the gap between Dumbo's existing office spaces and the office used to be constructed in the Watchtower buildings. According to projections in our environmental assessment statement, which were done according to the SECR manual, redevelopment of the two sites in the project area with three floors of office each would add 154 new office straps to the neighborhood. While the rezoning district does extend the Eagle Warehouse Building to buildings west of the development site, you see the development site in the outline is a historic district. The proposed rezoning area was excluded from the historic district when it was created in 1977. As part of our application process, the Landmark Preservation Commission was notified of this application. They reviewed our historic resources section of our environmental assessments. They have taken no action to include these sites in the historic district. With regards to the Borough President's concerns regarding minority and women-owned business enterprise participation, and the applicant will be seeking high-top tax payment, or tax benefits for this project, and will be required to solicit bids from MWPs or major construction contracts and subcontracts, they will also be reaching out to local business enterprises. I would also likely, I'd like to briefly touch on the community's concerns regarding the BQE. We understand it's a pressing issue, and we too would like to see a reconstruction plan for the BQE. However, I'm sure, as you are, but you're already aware, the Mayor's Brooklyn Police Expressway Expert Panel issued a report last week calling for immediate repairs to the existing structure and implementation of traffic management programs to extend the life of the BQE and prioritize public safety. The report also recommends looking at the 20-mile corridor holistically. This old Fulton Street is located more than 100 feet from the BQE, and there's plenty of public space between the proposed rezoning area and the BQE that could be used for station of these repairs. Nothing currently prohibits development of these sites, and we do not think it makes sense to hold up all rezonings in the proximity of the BQE while an overall strategy is developed for the 20-mile corridor. That process could take years, and does not make sense to freeze development in that time. As you've heard, our client is very excited for that opportunity to develop this property with a new building that reflects the historic fabric of the neighborhood and brings modern uses to the site. We respectfully request approval of this application. We're going to turn it over to Chris Fogan to give a overview of your architecture and tell you a little bit more about the building.
Hi, my name is Chris Fogan, of Architect's. Our firm's involved in a number of projects in Brooklyn. We're finishing up the Big Dime Bank Building, I've seen on-site of the BQE in Williamsburg, and restoring the original bank building there. We're doing an office tower, 141, with a beat just down the town. And we've been working at 175 Pearl around the corner from this site. It's a great location. We brought on recently to help with this parcel. The market in Dumbo is very strong for commercial office space. This size building, 6,600 square feet, so smallish boutique office buildings, very popular with tech firms, design firms, probably my firm. And I would be looking just like this building for a four-to-four height. That's kind of one of the critical things. Everybody works in big, modern plan offices nowadays, and rather than little cubicles, so a big, open, light-filled space is critical. The roof obviously is a big element. We would be doing with all the new local laws, green roofs, putting a solar power up there, and all stormwater would be retained on-site. We think it's a great site, great location, and a great opportunity. And I hope you will help us with rezoning. Thank you.
With that, I'll answer any questions. What's your question?
Mr. Fogan.
Yes.
Quick, quick, recent page. Just wondering, if you are, if you'd be interested in doing a landmark historic district, pretty much embodied by the Eagle Warehouse. Your aesthetic favor seems to be a talk for me.
So, can I say that we have been moved on in particular to help with that? So, this is showing a kind of massing conceptual idea. The idea of bringing our practice in is to understand the context of the neighborhood a little bit more, and directly look at this design, hearing some of those, you and the neighborhood as well.
So this is, essentially, this is a mass, at this point?
Yes. That's exactly.
One thing I'll say about this rendering is that it was the fourth, and this is the ground where this was.
Sorry, I'm encouraged. I'm looking forward to massaging it a little bit more.
Commissioner, first.
Well, with all due respect to our vice chairman, I would encourage you not to indulge in the stellar system of protection, but to provide a protective layer, and be a humble to the neighborhood.
That's a whole order. You can listen later. Other questions for the commissioner?
We were talking about this earlier, and I think, you know, Mr. Levin often says, I appreciate the comment that, you know, we can say what we like about the law that we have. But that, you know, at the end of the day, they can do what they want after they get the rezoning. So I think it's sort of helpful to understand where our scope is and, you know, where our responsibility lies.
Commissioner, those.
With that said, obviously, you had a vote both by the community board and the Borough President, which was disapproved. Can you maybe unpack that a little bit and talk about how you plan to address the concerns? Changing architects is one of the ways to address those concerns, but there's more, actually.
Yes, so we have brought on a fellow architect. We have reached out to groups in the community, particularly the Fulton Ferry Landing Association and the Dumbo Action Committee. Between our first visit to the community board and the whole board meeting, we did have a couple of very productive conversations. Unfortunately, following the Borough President's recommendation, those groups have said that they want to pull off further conversations. We hope that we will be back in touch with them, and we have also met with a council member and also been in touch with them as well. A lot of concerns were about the BQE, and we understand the issue there, but unfortunately, it's out of our hands what happens with the BQE. And we think that our development of the site would stand in the way of any of the plans to improve the safety and the traffic flow of the BQE.
Other questions? Thank you. We will now follow our standard procedure of starting with speakers in opposition and then speakers in support, with each speaker being limited to three minutes. Our first speaker is Bruce Jacobs, who will be followed by April Sombra.
Good morning, everybody. Bruce Jacobs, Coalition of Rockaway, fighter for the Rockaways, fighter for Southeast Queens, fighter for Brooklyn, fighter for religious, medical and religious freedom, U.S. Navy veteran. I have a problem with this. First of all, it seems that they save for the tourists. There's regular people living in that neighborhood, and what about the regular people? Everything is based on tourism. And there's enough office buildings in downtown Brooklyn that fall apart, that can't even rent place. Meanwhile, you're tossed up in Far Rockaway in East New York, and you'll forget about the rich neighborhood downtown Brooklyn. The community board and the Borough President say disapprove it. They know their neighborhood. I don't understand how it goes into, to accept this. Why is there a change in the district? And why they save for the big Dumbos and all that? There's empty stores down there. Why can't they build some kind of residential? The idea to put in solar roofs for offices, put solar roofs for the people. If it's okay to dump everything in Far Rockaway and dump everything in Southeast Queens and dump everything in East New York, because this neighborhood's developed, it's developed by drawing out people out of their neighborhoods. This cannot be approved. If this is approved, anybody in any part of New York could come and put in for a change. Like the lady said, after they approve it, they could do whatever they want. The bridge ain't even, the idea of the bridge ain't even, they're just trying to rush it. What's the rush? It's been for years, their neighborhood's been changed. We say, don't rush, make sure everything is proper. We say, "Don't rush, make sure everything is proper." What about the people from Brooklyn that wanted to live in that neighborhood, that grew up in that neighborhood? Now they're being pushed out of that neighborhood. There has to be some defense there. We don't need more office buildings. We don't need no fancy, fancy boutiques and all that. They're going to put the mom and pop stores out by accepting this. Thank you very much.
Questions? Thank you, Mr. Jacobs. Our next speaker is April Samson, who will be followed by Maggie Concar.
Good morning, Commissioner. My name is April Samson, and I'm a member of the North Heights P U D group in Brooklyn Heights, and I also represent and live in Bridge Harbor Heights, Convo Board, located on Poplar Street and Old Fulton Street. We are the caretakers of one of the first historic districts in New York City. Among some of the oldest buildings are the 1854 East Boys Orphanage Logic Building and the 1855. The area in which we care for includes the gas lamps that light our surrounding properties. And our gardens are certified by the National Wildlife Foundation as providing for wildlife sanctuary, plus my family and others enjoy the Wood School Park, Poplar Street Community Garden. Today, our neighborhoods have some increase in families of young children, beautifully mixed in with individuals born and raised here. We all partake in care for our historical neighborhood that is charming, beautiful, and holding for all. It is the soil in which my family has grown and will continue to uphold for years to come. It concerns me that old Fulton, that 50 Old Fulton Street is not within the boundaries of either Brooklyn Heights or the Fulton Ferry Historical, Fulton Ferry Landing Historical District. This is a neat, a unique piece of land that my children and I walk past all the time. I love seeing the small businesses. I love seeing, actually, the car shop is quite charging for the historical nature of the neighborhood. There's been a lot of development happening throughout Dumbo and Brooklyn Heights, as we know, with the large towers, massive buildings, all office buildings that are reshaping the community that we cherish. So, I'm here today to ask that you please continue to preserve the beauty and respect the historical nature of the neighborhood, to take into consideration our thoughtfulness and carefulness that we all love, and that this rezoning does not happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, yes. That's not so bad. Here, please.
All right. Thank you for your testimony. I guess my question is, would you prefer to see what's there remaining? Or what would you want to see happen to that section?
Yeah, I, to be honest with you, I see it on my window from where I live, very lucky that you are living today. But I would, if this were to disapprove, I would like to see more, more green space, something for the community. As we know, it is a corridor where you go into the BQE, but it is also where people live, families live. To have another structure next to the evil warehouse that is also residential and commercial right next to it, I would love a beautiful green space that my children can run into as they're going to Fulton Ferry Landing to enjoy the park. It's just, it would be more pleasant if it wasn't a large structure or corporate building.
Other questions? Okay, have a great day. Thank you. Our next speaker will be Maggie Concar, to be followed by Amanda Lenterin.
Hi. Good morning. My name is Maggie Concar, and I'm president of Bridge Harbor Heights Convo Two, as well as a member of Northern Heights Neighbors Group, and part of the Coalition of Members of the Q E T. I want to thank you for taking your time today to weigh in our testimony of 50 Old Fulton Street decision. Please do not consider the rezoning of 50 Old Fulton Street at this time. The site lies adjacent to the BQE ramp entrance, and it's at the heart of the most, one of the most infrastructural challenging, challenges facing New York City today, the BQE reconstruction. In light of the recent announcement by the mayor and the BQE expert panels of a serious deterioration of the structural integrity of BQE, the city should hold off on any rezoning changes until this site, until the full scope of the BQE reconstruction comprehensive plan is well considered. This area's unique connectivity, location, and the possible redesigning of this site is still undetermined, pending the BQE reconstruction comprehensive plan, which might include ramps, it might include parks, or other structures around or near this BQE. Any changes in the zoning right now would only complicate the BQE plans and further complicate the entire integrity. Not only do they not offer any benefit to the community as far as green space, but they will add an obstacle to the rezoning of this site by rezoning this site. As New Yorkers, we must endure the uncertainty of the much-needed repairs of this vital part of the BQE. If you have any questions, please.
Questions?
Think of this well.
Commissioner, that was.
Hi. Thank you for coming to testify. So, you said that you're part of the BQE Working Group?
I'm part of the Northern Heights Neighbors, as well as the Coalition.
Okay. And, and the plans, I mean, I know that the plans have shifted. What, what makes you believe that this particular site might be impacted by the BQE?
There is no determination that it won't be. So, we haven't, this, this particular presentation or this presentation that they presented today was not even presented to the panel. This is something that has just been seen by me today. So, it has not been questioned or, at this point, we really need to review this. At this point, is she not being deserved? And it should be ruled by. I totally respect what the borough president testified and where he's actually said, "We must take a look at this in historical perspective." Anything that is done today will not be, no input would be given by either Northern Heights or Fulton Ferry Landing, or even by the borough president's office. This is a very important site. It really needs to have all the neighbors, all the coalitions come together to make this, by this area, not just for the neighborhood, but for New York.
Other questions? Thank you for coming, Commissioner. Our next speaker is Amanda Lenterin, who will be followed by Darrell Harland.
Hi. My name is Amanda Lenterin. I've lived in the Brooklyn Heights Dumbo area for over 24 years, and I've lived in Dumbo on Washington Street for over eight years. I live near 50 Old Fulton Street and passed it many times. So, while I actually know that Sand's Auto Business is actually a really great business, I've had my car fixed there, and should any of you need a car fixed, you should see him out there. Maybe, maybe, he's brilliant. But I am excited to say that I'm here, that I'm, to see something new on that site would be really good for the neighborhood. The majority of Fulton Street between Brooklyn Bridge Park and the BQE is lined with different buildings and very beautiful buildings, and a lot of them are historical, and walking past them is really wonderful. And however, you know, the auto body shops are really difficult to navigate, trying to walk past them and through them. Not only walking, driving is hard to sort of navigate in that area. So, I'm really glad to see that someone's going to invest in that site and, and build something new. So, I think that that would be really, really good for the neighborhood. As a small business owner, I think this is a good thing. There are a lot of buildings that are available for businesses, and they're extremely high-priced, and it's very, not to say that this won't be, but I don't know, I think that, you know, having sort of different options for small businesses or businesses in the area is a good thing. I also wanted to talk a little bit about Mr. Lieberman. I have lived in one of his buildings, and I think he's incredibly clever man. He cares for his community, and the building that I live in kind of reflects how he has constructed the building. He's used a lot of interior original pieces of the building. It looks really nice, it fits in the community. His building is incredibly diverse. There's people from all walks of life in the building, and unless they are moving out of the state, no one leaves the building. And when someone does leave, there's a mad scramble in the building to get that apartment, and there's like a huge runaround. So, it's very clean, it's well-run, he has art in his building, and I've even on occasion found him on a Sunday morning, him and his wife personally planting flowers outside, which is good for me. So, I hope that the Commissioner will approve this application. I think it's a really good thing.
Would you like to explain this to each of your small businesses?
It's a marketing and events company.
Questions from the Commissioner? Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker will be Darrell Harland, to be followed by Penny, Penny Alford.
Come on, everyone. My name is Darrell Ball. I'm a community activist downtown Brooklyn, also a part of the New York two proximity. I'm able to see it at 3:00 AM, approximately, maybe 15 to 20 minutes late in a big, you know, area. I've also lived in the area for decades, from now on, diversity, or practice, over 30 years. I'm extremely excited to have this redevelopment down that 50 Old Fashion Street. I bring my family, my daughter, we walk down in that area, and it's kind of challenging to have a mom and a senior, my daughter, walking by the cars and inhaling all the gas, and sometimes the cars zip out, some people may get bumped a little bit. So, I would appreciate if there's anything they can do to improve the area, but most importantly, we sincerely hope that they approve the application.
Questions? Thank you. Questions? Thank you, Harland. Our next speaker is Penny Benayaf, to be followed by Candace Clements. Clements.
He has to leave. He has to leave, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Everyone, my name is Candace Clements, and I live in the Minneapolis area that's owned and run by Mr. Lieberman for the last five years, I think, a part of one of his buildings. I've been in the neighborhood for about eight years, and I used to look into that building because the neighbor told me it was an old chocolate factory, and I was excited to see what he had done and how he had kept the original, like, presence of the building. So, being a part of the building was super, super made up. Mr. Lieberman? It's not a complete building, guys. It was renovated, and he even, as far as to, you know, make extra renovations for my daughter, and, you know, really invested in the building. I mean, so what one of my neighbors said, you know, "There's tons of green space." We're very, he's very much involved in the community, and he keeps the building in great condition. A lot of natural parts, like he requested, that he kept, the old, original brick walls is available. And so, when it comes to the architecture and the structure, as well as things for the community, Tommy has never let us down on overall maintenance. We have block parties, rooftop parties, just overall how involved he is, as he is as a landlord, it's impressive. I would honestly say that, you know, just going down into the gym, you could feel like you're the old candy factory in our building, and that's how much of, like, personality our building has and how much he's invested into shooting, you know, things to the way they were. It's important to us, our neighbors, we know them, we all hang out, and the sense of community that that building brings, when people never leave, it's important. So, I think that we should approve.
Questions? Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Nick Hopkins.
My name is Nick Hopkins. I'm in charge, representing the applicant. I have nothing more to add, just if you have any further questions, based on the testimony, answer them or?
Questions from the Commissioner?
I'd like to compliment your associate, Rachel Scott. She didn't need to be right beside her.
Um, does it have any communication between the applicant and the boroughs in the city of BQE?
Really, to the BQE, other than, you know, DOT, the neighborhood process?
It might be helpful to have some kind of, of awareness of that, for the necessity of BQE reconstruction, because we're saying one way or the other, the site, yeah, is appropriate, or considered a positive.
Go ahead, everybody.
Other questions, sir? Thank you. And I'll note that those are the only folks who have signed up to speak, but if anyone is in this sultry room and you're just going to testify on this matter, please come forward. The public hearing is closed.
Borough of Manhattan, calendar number 24, CD2C200149ZAM. A public hearing in the matter of an application for a zoning map amendment concerning 364 Avenue of the Americas rezoning.
Good morning, Chair, Commissioners, Mrs. O'Val, Sheldon O'Val, and Seals, President of CEO, and Stroud, and Flit, and Seals. I feel like I've gone for like NSG, you know, like a club. So, we're here today to discuss the 364 Avenue 29. Obviously, rezonings are very straightforward rezoning. It was a rezoning for converting a C15 overlay within the R17 district to a C25 overlay. You can note from the zoning map in a certain area that this is an area where you got a lot of commercial activity and overlays. In general, there's a C45 district immediately to the north of Bayview, which is, allows for more intensive commercial uses than the C15, and it's more akin to the C25. Also, when taking a look at the extension of the map, you'll note that to the south along Avenue of the Americas and Springs Street, there is a C25 overlay that is a subject of a rezoning we brought up a little over a year ago for, again, a C15 to a C25 rezoning. The purpose of that rezoning, as is the purpose of this rezoning, is for PCE uses. So, again, a physical culture establishment, which is subject to special permit pursuant to Section 7336, a rezoning resolution is not permitted in a C1 district, but is permitted by special permit in a C2 district. So, I would say sadly, we're in a position where we're to, here, legalize only the PCE use in the form of a spa which is offering massage. We are, again, for the Commission to allow for a C25 overlay. Again, this is the area map. You can see that this is a very, obviously, dense commercial area, 6th Avenue being a central commercial corridor in this area. And again, a more focused view of the zoning change map with a 100-foot depth from Avenue of the Americas, back a long way from the place, the Washington Place. You know, I would note in regards to the C25, that in city planning's own area-wide rezoning is now notably the East Harlem rezoning, C25 was a popular choice for district among avenues and central corridors. Importantly, in that rezoning as well, because there's always precipitated conversation regarding PCEs, PCEs in that special district are now permitted as a right, provided that you have a district. Clearly, we do not benefit from that, so we must ask for a C25, and then subsequently an applicant would go to PSA for a special permit. You can see the building at the, from the pictures, primarily along the left side. The building is a five-story building, built to R17 standards, and is a 3044 FAR. It's a monthly, and the building, there's roughly 28 residential units, and there are various features along the surrounding streets. I would note that the community board was generous enough to approve us, finding that a score of 38-nothing, as the American Borough President echoed that vote in supporting the application as well, particularly in line, in line of the context of the area and the fact that the C25 really replicates the diversity of uses in this area. So, on that note, if you have an answer or question?
And I wanted to let you know that Club CPC is out of the party.
Oh, yeah. Very much so.
Questions from the Commissioner? Thank you, Mr. Harland. Oh, I'm sorry.
Commissioner, that's just a comment here. You seem to have a certain amount of experience with these kinds of applications, and it refers to me that you would be doing the city even in homeless public service, that you could find a creative solution for a citywide change, that would get rid of these PCE applications. I don't know where it is, but we, as you pointed out in your column and other, other rezonings, we have a habit of maneuvering away around this, but it's just ridiculous that tenants like this have to go through this process and then go to the PSA, the permit, the whole thing is obsolete and an apparatus, and from your, you know, thinking random thoughts, it would be great to get one of these.
And we take out a big chunk of my business.
I'll ask the second comment first. I mean, how can you give up that part of it? So, the history buzz right now, actually, is that there may be an application in the works by a larger PCE applicant to do this very, to accomplish this very goal. I will note that the, the BSA calendar, on an average, Tuesday, is just overrun with these types of special permits. I mean, the truth is, this is, this is one of the most frequently filed applications of the BSA. We, I understand the history of the special permit, given the former activities of PCEs oftentimes illegal, and so we was that oversight required. Now, though, the fact that they are subject to a scrutiny, most of my, of my weeks, I get a call from an applicant who is a SOA operator, a small PC operator, who is unbelievably burdened and looking at unfortunate options, including whether they have to open up illegally or do this. The only reason I raise this, because many applications at BSA are brought as legalization, because people just can't raise the funds necessary to engage in this rather costly process. So, again, I'm happy to have the chance.
Maybe you're against your self-interest, but I'm sure you'll buy a lot of other legalization of.
I'm totally fine with that.
I'll note that the department is very supportive of this directional move. When we talk about the changing nature of retail, we know that so many of our commercial business groups are activated by the presence of PCE along them. If we had a magic non-legal law to make it the whole way, I think we'd be deploying it in this instance.
But thanks.
Other questions from the?
Other questions for Mr. O'Vald? Okay. Our next speaker is Bruce Jacobs.
Bruce Jacobs, Coalition Rockaways, fight for the Rockaways, fight for Southeast Queens, Brooklyn, and religious and medical freedom. Deloitte is a very nice guy. I understand he's working for a client or, you know, there's reasons when they want to change special things. I understand what the woman here said, that, "Oh, we just take a wand and forget about it." No, we can't, because the law is the law. He even brought up that a lot of people are doing it illegally. Now, I'm going to say this once again, if I was a guy in my neighborhood, a mafia guy, and I fixed up my neighborhood beautifully, am I a good guy? No, I'm not. There's laws and regulations that have to be followed. When you switch one special, you know, permit, everybody else should have the same opportunity to do it. Like, they said, "Oh, it's very expensive to go through this process." Thank God it's very expensive to go through this process, because if you couldn't, anybody would switch everything. This Van Hooen View Committee, I appreciate the stuff you guys do, but there's more to it than just statistics and areas and nobody could judge what kind of people or who, what they think. If the other people in that neighborhood are doing things illegally, they should be fined and stopped. At least this man here comes with a, you know, his client wants to get things done properly, but the problem is the switching and the acceptance. I'm going to say if some, you know, people that got money, they're going to be able to make this decision, but if it's a guy who can't afford it, he can't get nothing done. Everything is approved in this meeting by laws and regulations. So laws and regulations have to be followed and I don't like the idea of a special permit just being done like this and I'd like to see investigations into seeing how things can be done. Thank you very much.
Any questions? Those are the only speakers on this matter unless there's someone else who would want to hear her. The public hearing is closed.
Borough of Manhattan, calendar number twenty-five, C D seven, C two zero zero one four zero P P M. A continued public hearing in a matter of an application for the disposition of one city-owned property concerning Two Sixty Six West Ninety-Six Street. Notice, a public hearing is being held by the City Planning Commission in conjunction with the above you appear to receive comments related to a draft environmental impact statement. This hearing is being held pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act and the City Environmental Quality Review.
I'll note that, as the secretary said, this is a continuation of the public hearing, so anyone who has not spoken before or prior public hearing is free to sign up. Our first speaker is Bruce Jacobs.
Once again, Bruce Jacobs, Coalition Rockaways, fight for the Rockaways, fight for Southeast Queens, fight for New York, also medical and religious freedom, representative of the Red Form Projects in Queens. Now, everything is submitted to the Department of Housing Preservation for this rezoning. Now, I'm going to have to see how the neighborhood really feels, like if they could put these sort of things and build all kind of housing, by the city, by the people being able to really have a say in it. I say, like they say to the community boards and everything, you know, they, you know, that's kind of like happen to say, but not really, because there's a lot of people that are working, there's a lot of people that don't have time to do these kind of things. And I don't like the idea that this, they say from M two, what is mixed middle income? Now, you're already knocking out M one, like they use that excuse, Rockaways, they, "Oh, M one, M two would be no good." I like M two, but why in the Rockaways was it M one? Why on West Ninety-Six Street is it M two? To me, it's going to be overpriced and whoever's left over there will not be able to get in that neighborhood. Now, they say mixed use with all kind of other stuff, it's selected by the H B D. I seen M two rental exist. That rent, a regular person with a regular income cannot afford to be in there. And I'd like them to, a twenty-three story, that, and they say the community facility uses, what kind of community facility uses they talk about? Everything's a nonprofit? To me, it's not the idea of nonprofit, it's the idea of, do these guys from the neighborhood? Do they care about the neighborhood? Or are they outsiders coming into the neighborhood? Also, I'd like to see what kind of jobs be brought and what kind of community facility uses and, you know, that's about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobs. Questions?
My name is Alan Romer and I live at seven thirty-two West Den Avenue and I serve as our condominium's president. Thank you to the chair and the commissioners for the opportunity to speak with you this morning. I'm here today because the community board's set a land use recommendation for this project as submitted to our borough president did not include the suggested recommendation that N Y C planning evaluate the potential waiver of or grandfathering the current lack of a thirty-foot setback on this R ten A contextual zoning site. This was particularly disappointing because C D seven district need statement regarding land use specifically states their desire to address extremely tall buildings that dwarf their neighborhood. Therefore, I respectfully request, prior to approving this disposition, N Y C planning evaluate the utilization of the entire combined parcel of land for this construction project, just as all of the existing buildings are constructed on these three individual parcels today. An R ten A contextual zoning waiver or grandfathering would result in a twelve-story building rather than a twenty-three-story building with the same buildable square footage and achieve the affordable housing socioeconomic goals of this project. To be clear, our building unit orders generally support the disposition of the M T A substation. We appreciate that the proposed project is a ground here, clean and vacant, and that the building design will incorporate architectural aspects of the substation. Improvements to our Upper West City Block are welcome and as you may know, this is one of three major projects on our city block alone, which represents approximately fifteen percent of the planned buildings in the C D seven district. However, the proposed building is not, the height is not congruent with the rest of the city block or the Upper West Side. While this project has been deemed as a right, the thirty-foot setback requirement on the southern side of this property, representing one-third of the entire combined parcel, means that a building that would normally require twelve stories to accommodate the maximum allowable square footage on the full parcel is now nine stories taller, or twenty-three stories in total, excluding the bulkhead, which will further increase the overall height by two or three stories to twenty-five or twenty-six stories. This will result in a skyscraper that will be substantially taller, nearly double the size of anything on our city block and make it one of the tallest buildings on the Upper West Side between Seventy-second and a Hundred and Sixth Streets. The impact of this proposed building will be felt by thousands of residents in the immediate area. Not only would a twelve-story building be more consistent with the Upper West Side neighborhood and improve, improve the quality of life for neighboring residents, but it should also be less expensive for the developer, reduce overall construction time, decrease noise nuisance, and diminish significant transportation congestion that will all be associated with this project on Ninety-Six Street between West End and Broadway, two of the busiest and most dangerous intersections in the Upper West Side. Given the history of Two Hundred Amsterdam, the Ariel East, Ariel West, Columbia, and similar skyscrapers have been constructed over the past several decades and tower over our neighborhood, I encourage N Y C planning to take action to protect the skyline of the Upper West Side so that it does not become Midtown Northwest and forever change the landscape of our historical landmark neighborhood. Therefore, again, I respectfully request that prior to the disposition, the planning is there a waiver of the R ten A contextual zoning for the thirty-foot setback requirement or grandfathering the existing buildings as built. Thank you for your time this morning.
More questions? Questions?
Where is your residence vis a vis the site?
We are on that same city block and we are a lot line to the West End.
So you are West End?
We are on West End, that's correct, seven thirty-two West End between Ninety-Fifth and Ninety-Six Streets.
Other questions? Thank you.
Thank you for your发言.
Those are the only speakers on this hearing who have signed up?
I missed that I couldn't speak because I spoke previously.
Yes.
I made submissions. If you wished to ask me questions, I would be happy to respond.
No, I thank you for submitting written comments, which the commission will accept. Thank you. I'll note that the record on this hearing is going to remain open to receive written responses or written comments on the V E I S and it will be open through Tuesday, February twenty twenty. And we thought that the public hearing is closed. Madam Secretary, any other business?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay, so we can leave us at our corners? Thank you for the setup. Thank you to all the ladies that are on the line.